Thank you all for coming on this meeting that ordered the regular meeting of the Wood Creek City Council, July 12, 2023, 6:30 PM, which is your city hall. And I would ask everyone to rise for a moment of silence and then stay standing. Thank you. Obligatively, this is the flag of the United States of America. And you can read the rip off of it, which stands for limitation under God in this law with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, a flag for the unity of one state, under God, one and individual.
Mayor DeFranco.
Here.
Mayor for Timbuktu.
Here.
Councilmember Vanaya Bailey, here. Councilmember Chris Grimmer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hambert.
Here.
Councilmember Diver Heinz.
Here.
Right, so we do have forum?
Sure.
Um, and we just have some public comments, starting with Meritorial Whitehead.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I will try, this was the letter that I wrote to be read at the time of the meeting and then put on the record in the meeting. If it's on here, I'm just going to, instead of reading the entire letter, I'm just going to give you a summary of what I did say and the issues that I have, just in the interest of time and many others who are wanting to speak tonight. But I live at 17th and Wilbrook Lane, and I've been a resident of Wood Creek for 25 years. I've served this community as mayor twice and in other capacities of the city. I feel like there are a number of issues that every administration has to deal with, and issues that bubble to the top and then are real important to the citizen. I think that this particular meeting, this particular evening, I have, regretfully, a number of objections to this agenda. And I'm going to skip quickly through item six on the agenda. Frequency, location, time of meetings. The citizens have repeatedly expressed disfavor for the process in place. This item fails to address the primary concerns of excessive number of Toma committee meetings, excessive length of meetings, discouragement of public attendance, which does revolve, and abuse of staff time and expense. Yet again, you're proposing to add another meeting, in fact, two twice as many meetings, and ignore this dysfunctional process that's in place. So much for claims of listening to constellations. Item number seven, social media policy. There's been little to no opportunity for public input. The subject's been discussed on and on for several years. It's questionable that such a policy has received support from the community. Also, I'm concerned, and it has been brought to our attention in workshops and in previous presentations on this matter, from professionals, that we need people review on the provision of retention of records to meet state requirements. I don't see where any of that is in place. The administration of the proposed Facebook and Nextdoor social media accounts will also, regardless of planes, will add a needed level of additional staff to meet these requirements. Our resources are limited. Also, frankly, there's a very high potential for abuse for personal and political purposes. Item 10, send packet items for this item to PNC and ordinance review input. This item fails to meet Toma in every way possible. The public deserves that authority in a posted agenda. A guessing game, what this item is about, is simply illegal.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much. Ladies, here's your chair up here and there's one in the back. You're welcome to sit in those, but you can't sit in the floor. Tell your time, that's good. And there's one on the second row as well.
Next, uh, Diddy Brizan.
I'd like to please you open my room minutes to Aurora LeBron.
Limo.
One day. After you want to hear.
You want to wait until he did item?
I'll be your man after I've had him to try.
Um, I, I will, um, mention just one of that, that we are going to, um, work, uh, we're not going to hear, you know, agenda item number 10 is going to be full. Um, so if you'd like to speak to, now, if you want to wait, you know, you can, but we're not going to, we're not going to address it tonight. So, you know, if you'd like to speak to the content of it now, you know, it might, you may or not speak.
Yeah, I would like to. Might as well. Well. I have the same question about number 10, you know, why was it being sent back to PNC? You know, there's going to be a debate either in a town hall or, or I know the meeting on the 26th, and that's going to be a debate, I guess, between, um, a general Danforth, I know your current body, and our distinguished attorney sitting over there in $5,000 suit. I'm just joking. But anyway, I looked at your opinion, I've got a couple of comments to it, though. I think you've got apples and oranges, uh, apples and oranges discussing, you mentioned grapevine, a city of about 50,000. In 2018, they, I think they had their orders and FGRs around the city. I touched on the Supreme Court recently, it's downset, down to our lower court of kind of motions and vote for it. The PNC is not a, let's don't have any, any SGRs. They recommend in three different areas, so I think when you discuss grapevine, no SGRs do, do, uh, to this city, what's it meant to be recommended by PNC, uh, having three districts. I think that's a, I think that's probably an apple and orange. And also, I noticed you said in there that PNC, just two months ago, was recommending no SGRs. Well, they've been working on this thing for about a year. I know when I was a PNC commissioner, two years ago, we were thinking about pushing no SGRs, but the current attorney at that time said, that's not going to pass in Smith, so we backed off. And then I resigned from PNC for his reasons. And so Andy Davenport had traveled New Burton for about nine or 10 months, almost a year, and coming up with a 53-page report. And it, it now recommend, which was published back in, back in, uh, in March. And whether y'all have read it, I don't know, but I wish the hell you haven't. It has a lot of information. You know, life is full of risks. And if you don't take one once in a while, you're going to live a real dull life. And when I say that, um, this city has taken some risks in the past. Um, Brent Foley mentioned it to me the other day. I don't have all the details, but he and I think Mr. Gordon, uh, took on a case involved, I think that they're involved in over Jacob Swell, with, with knowing that there could be a heck of a lawsuit against the city for that activity. Uh, and that our parent lawsuit never occurred. And the same party here, just a year ago, uh, decided to stop the effort, uh, the Oakslit effort and send back the drawing board, knowing that that could be a potential lawsuit. In fact, a couple of y'all probably told me that, you know, we, the comment was, I think we probably are going to get sued. In fact, the previous city manager said, the guy's going to own the city. So there was great concern about, we're going to get sued, we're going to get sued. And I'll put a message about Mr. Book, taking part in this, but hell, two years ago, he sued the city. That's guts, I mean, I mean, he, you know, for principle, what he believed in, he sued the city. And the city, and the city county sued him, telling you it's looking at a $50,000 bill, but he took a risk. And what I'm saying is, why aren't we taking a risk on the PNC? And what was really disturbing to me, when I saw a video, I saw the video, I guess, of council meeting last month, I'm going to turn, Mr. Gordon and the mayor. And our attorney turned to our mayor and said, you know, you told me to take a conservative approach to the SGR. And why didn't we do that? We hadn't done that in the past. You know, one observation, maybe this is not fair, but I want to say. Some of you, I believe, believe that a homeowner has unrestricted rights to use their property in any fashion they want, they want to use the floor, whether it's SGRs, above ground pools, or backyard chickens, or, you know, unmaintained yards, the whole list goes on. And so I said, well, if they believe that, then they believe in telling our city attorney to take a conservative approach. You know, I don't know why, you just, uh, just don't have the courage and guts to kind of notice the gentleman over there and, and say, hey, you know, let's take a risk and let's implement the PNC report. It's well written, surely may be a headache down the road, but we face those, you deal with them at a time. But we just kicking this stuff, I'm a military, and it runs up the mountain. I use the old phrase, kicking the damn can down the road, and that's exactly what we're doing. This thing's coming up next month, and next month coming up another month. And it's just going to drive on and drive on until you have the guts to say, I've had enough, because the people in this city have had, they, they want an action. And I think the action is, is implement a, uh, SGR approach that allows them in three different areas that probably hopefully will pass legal spell.
Thank you, Mr. Boes.
I was going to say one of the big, it's a big issue.
Your time is up.
I know, but this is just trying, this, uh, last time I thought, I told my wife I wasn't ever going to do this again. But unfortunately, this SGR is one big tar baby, and I'm stuck to the damn thing.
And you do, I mean, and, and, yeah, I can respond with factual information, correct? Um, it is, it is something that needs to be reviewed, the SDR thing's been going around and around. Um, we know that, that there are risks out the back. Um, there are new risks, and because of that, we are going to take an action. There's a, a, um, public hearing, um, that is currently scheduled for the 26th of July. And, um, and basically, in the, in the, they have the legislature, the governor Abbott signed a new law which went into effect, creating new conditions which the city must address before we hold a public hearing to consider changes to our zoning ordinances. Staff has been instructed to identify all SDRs, whether operating legally or illegally, and provide them with the new notice required by law before the council holds its public hearing. Now, at that point, the mayor's powers under chapter 22 include that planning and public hearings is to ensure compliance with the law. The council will not hold a public hearing on July 26th, and will close the hearing for a period of no more than 30 days or until legal certifies compliance with the new law. We intend to follow state laws and consider ending, present the best the R and N and most part of our plea. And Mr. Boes, we did get sued on the Jacob Swell issue, the city did get sued by the developers. We defended that city.
Can I make a, just a point of fact as well, we did get sued, we, we handled that successfully. Um, I'll tell you that Roger Gordon was the attorney in that case, uh, and, and was very good for this. He's also given us a lot of alternatives with regard to SDRs and we're looking at all of that, man. You know, so we're trying, Jack, you know, we really are, so I thank you for hanging in there with that tar baby of yours, man, so, I mean.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um. Aurora LeBron.
Okay, um, I, I know you said before item number 10. I was going to speak to item number 10, primarily the deficiency of the notice under the open record that. I know that there is a packet that's posted, however, electronic posting is secondary to the posting that you have to do in place at city hall or any other subject or any other location that the city identifies. So for the citizens to know what the subject is and to be prepared when they come and speak, the, uh, the, this, the agenda has to stand on its own when it comes to sufficiency. I think I sent you an email and I suggested, um, that how the same item could have been put on with, and not that had raised any concerns of mine. Uh, that is my primary concern. I also question myself, you know, why is this going to ordinance review competing? I read the bill, it's Senate Bill 229, the, uh, 229, it is, but the bill that was mentioned here, uh, 2929, I'm sorry, I'm dyslexic, Senate Bill 929, that speaks to what cities have happened, and it has happened throughout the, throughout the state, where cities change ordinances and a business that is conforming, then under the new ordinance is not conforming. We had a city that decided they were going to have a North District and told me if we were operating there, they could no longer operate. So yes, there is concern and thinking, well, if there, how is this going to apply? I have known Mr. Gordon, I have worked with him, and I feel that he is the most appropriate person to provide any type of review, any type of analysis or advice. I do not believe, I have great respect for planning and zoning and ordinance review, but I do not believe that they would compare to what Mr. Gordon offered. So this, if we are concerned about this bill, then it should go to Mr. Gordon. He should make the analysis and city council can see what impact, if any, it will have in the, on the city. I do, I have worked for many years with the Texas, and we were one of the agencies that picked the record with having open record, uh, open records requests. And so I'm very fond of the open meetings and open records. I have followed it for 25 years, sufficiency in your items is a must. I encourage you to follow that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, do you want to, you want to address 11 now, or do you want to address it when item number 11 comes?
Yeah. I can see item number 11. Um, I asked Gavin if I could, and he said I could. Okay, I'm talking about item 11, and it's a comprehensive plan, and this item is summarized by the sponsor and the client. States that council should periodically review the plan and assess how the governing body is working to achieve the goal and objectives of the plan. She also asked that the purpose of the discussion is to identify items that have been completed, are in progress, and highlight areas that are in need of additional attention and action. The plan was adopted by council, as you know, on October 12, 2022, and any review is the responsibility of planning and zoning and not council. Section 3037 of the city's code of ordinances, chapter 30, defines the duties and responsibilities of the planning and zoning commission. Paragraph B1, the commission shall be an advisory body, an adjunct to the city council, and shall make recommendations regarding amendments to the municipal comprehensive plan. The commission should conduct a biennial review of the city's municipal comprehensive plan and shall be prepared to make recommendations to the city council as deemed necessary to keep the plan current in changing conditions and trends and with the planning needs of the city. Article page 71 of the comprehensive plan defines the implementation of a planning for phase, phase one, presentation and adoption that has occurred. Phase two, implementation is in place. Phase three, review of the comprehensive plan every two years by the planning and zoning commission to assess the achievement of or progress toward each goal, effectiveness of the strategies utilized, and conduct an update of the citizen survey as needed. The process for developing the plan began in the fall of 2020. I was involved in it. Roles and responsibilities were reviewed throughout the process, council responsibilities identified, and using the plan to guide the system on land use, regulation, and other city improvement, rather than be the evaluator of progress. Evaluates. This item ignores that, in my opinion, the provisions are two of the most critical documents that guide the city on to create, both the present and future, the code of ordinances and the comprehensive plan. If you feel the need, if you don't want to wait until the November 2024, you feel the need of some update, I would suggest the appropriate process would be for the mayor or, if necessary, to discuss the issue with the planning and zoning commission chair, request an interim update, but not take over the process, ignoring the city ordinances and the language of the comprehensive plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diana. Thanks for being here.
Hello, thank you.
What you got?
Well, I do like to share, I'm a member of the Zollis with PEC, I'm a, at Hart House, like a cooperative, I think, public affairs representative. And I'm really happy to show that we're proudly joining our members and communities and celebrating our 80th anniversary and the electrification of Texas Hilton. Well, we were officially incorporated May, on May 19, 1938, and on September 27, 1938, we received a $1.3 million loan from the REA, which is the Rural Electrification Administration, to build our first 1,800 miles of line. We connected our first 422 members at our version station on October 27, 1939. A little bit over in the air later. D.C. was created by Hiltonry Texans, along with then Congressman LVJ, or Lincoln B. Johnson, to provide safety, reliable, and low-cost power to our communities, and we have always stayed focused on that mission. Once said, of all the things I have ever done, nothing has given me as much satisfaction and brain of power to the Hiltonry of Texas. Over the past 85 years, we DC has grown to become the largest cooperative in the U.S., serving more than a million central Texans in some of the nation's fastest-growing counties. In fact, we serve all or part of 24 counties and 45 franchise cities, uh, one of which is, of course, Wood Creek. Uh, we are planning various events and activities to celebrate our 85th, including birthday parties for seniors who are also turning 85. And we're also asking members with historical items and all our members, you don't have to be 35, 85. But we're also asking our members that have historical items, photos, or stories to share them with us for our co-op archives. But I just want to share that our rich history includes being rooted in seven cooperative principles, focused on a democratic process where every member is encouraged to be involved in the business of our cooperative. One of the cooperative principles is concern for community, which focuses on member needs because co-ops work for the sustainable development of our communities. In 2006, we launched our Power of Change program, which today has provided more than $575 in community grants and support for nonprofits across the Texas Hilton country. And I'm happy to share that here in your community or nearby, the Institute of Poultry for the Wimberly Valley were recently awarded a $5,000 community grant from PEC. Their grant will fund a rainwater catching system and master naturalism, gardening, knitting. Wow. So, but then you, you are already participating in D.C.'s Power of Change program, where your electric bill is rounded up and funds collectively support worthy nonprofit projects. Or you can always contact us at PEC if you'd like to sign up. And I always like to say that we deliver more than just electricity. We're very proud to support the wonderful communities that we serve. And then just in closing, I just want to just say that we're very proud of our 85 years of powerful memory with our members, and we look forward to serving you, our members, many more, and that's all through me.
Thanks for being here, congratulations on 85. I'm hoping somebody will wish me congratulations on maybe one of these days. So, um, I am, I did, I did.
If I could, I'd like to make a motion regarding the agenda that we remove number 11, based on what we've already heard from, from Mr. LeBron.
There's no second, we will not be.
All second.
Removing 11, I'm going to exit in a second, so we will continue with number 11. Um, and I would like to, as I mentioned, we're going to do a little bit of juggling on the agenda. I'd like to go to number five right now, the presentation of the Spirit of Wood Creek Award. Um, the camp can't do day on, because they, they don't have to sit through the rest of the meeting. Then I'd like to, if y'all step forward, Frank and Danny.
What I put, guys, um, what I want to know, that one of the things we do here today is we discuss and we debate, like the democracy should do. The other thing is we do, is we also celebrate and we thank people. What we have is what's called the Spirit of Wood Creek Award. I want to like read this, so I'll make sure I get this right, this gets established, to recognize and to thank folks, you know, for helping to make Wood Creek a really special place. You guys have stepped up, that, that whole camp, you know, today, our team, the community have really done that. I'm going to give you just some kind of specifications. You guys have helped with COVID, you have first responders with COVID, you've helped us have meetings at your place, you've helped us have special events at your place, uh, you sponsored a picnic table that were part of you, and you also make some of the, the best cinema roles on the planet. Well, the company's, yeah, damn right, man. Uh, so it is our honor today to recognize and to thank you guys, man, as part of our process today. Before we get too much further, another other people that want to speak up and say thank you, Deborah, Jeff, anybody else in the council.
Yeah, so, uh, the CYJ camp has generously provided some housewarming training volunteers that have been working with the city. I was working with them for three weekends in a row on our community garden. They volunteered and built the boxes there and helped set up phase one and build the trail to phase two. Uh, we cleaned up the mulch out of the back of the parking lot, and then this coming month, they're going to be working with the Parks Department closely to, uh, work on a best-to-drive. And so those are young volunteers and counselors and training that they have worked with us and, uh, you know, they didn't have to help the city, but they chose to do that, and they reached out to us. So it, you know, the, the picnic table, as, uh, council member Foley, or mayor Prog, sorry, Foley said, also Wood Creek Day, and the Arbor Day last year, they hosted, so it's not just any event. They're hosting things that are very important for our community and very specific to Wood Creek only. And for that, we're really grateful, you have a great space, a great team, and, um, so thank you all.
Yep, I, I go back, um, a few more years than, than some of y'all, and, um, before Danny even. And, um, and Frank and I, you know, got to be, you know, pretty tight, um, when we're sort of working on, you know, how the city and, and the camp can work together. Um, and I don't know about you, Frank, but, you know, I'm, I'm absolutely blown away at where we are. Um, I mean, especially, you know, as we mentioned, you know, getting through the whole COVID thing, and we needed a place, we couldn't, we couldn't meet here. I mean, this would have been illegal, this, this group here, but we get spread out at the camp. And y'all came forward like every time and said, sure, and, yeah, we don't care that it's 7 o'clock at night, well, we care a little bit, but, um, but, um, I just, we couldn't have gotten through the last couple of years without, and the, and the Spirit of, of Wood Creek Award, something that, that Mayor Prog, him fully, you know, just sort of originally came up with. Um, and it's a way to recognize our neighbors, you know, for the contributions they make to the rest of the city. And y'all are very definitely neighbors. In fact, you were here before we were. Yeah, we're there first, so, so it's like, so thank you both very much. Thank all of your team, um, have really enjoyed getting to know and work with Barack and Wendy and some of the others. And, and as, as Kelly, as I was saying, you know, they just called us up and said, hey, we need a project or two. You know, and, and what we really want to do is work. You know, and, and what we really want to do is work on Sunday afternoons in the middle of the summer. And I'm like, okay.
And I, I have a comment. I want to also to not let us get past this moment and to bring up during COVID. The project that we had as community that fed and housed and helped our first responders. Firemen, the other first responders came out daily. You delivered meals, you provided meals and the others in the community that tried for us. So we did send out certificates and awards in, in a different way. But I do believe this is so warranted, I think council member Mayor Pro Tem fully had a fabulous idea. And we do thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
First of all, Deborah is the one who originated, so I want to thank you. You're the one who reminded us about all you do. So it is our honor and it's council and this community to present you formally with this award and recognition for your work. For your friendship and your love of this community and for your spirit, your spirit of Wood Creek, thank you, sir.
I'm not a bro. Thank you, Frank, giving my daughter. You ready? She was in high school.
Don't get Brett's feet.
One, two, three. There you go, beautiful.
Great.
Go ahead. So we're going to continue to, to. Gobble the agenda a little bit for our guests and move on to item number three. Monica, what's? We're going to move to item number three, receiving briefing from Stiefel Nicholas and Taffey regarding the pricing summary of our D O bonds. And matters incident there too.
Yes, sir, Mayor and members of the council. Brad Axt and Stephen Bell with Stiefel Public Finance, we serve as the city's municipal advisor and bond advisors. So, so all the work we've been doing over the last several months. Came together today for the sell of your bonds, the bond sale and pricing. So we went out this morning about eight thirty and opened up an order period. And received more than fifty bids on your, on your bonds and different. So congratulations, yeah, it was a good showing. And we're pleased that we're able to meet your goals, keep it under the two cent increase on the I N S. Increment at a low interest rate. My, my colleague and partner, Stephen Bell, has prepared a pricing summary. I'm going to let him go through some more of these details now.
Yeah, so bear with us, we get a little bit more in detail here. So really two things going into this. Helped the pricing, we were a little, we were optimistic but cautious. That we've probably spoken on this before, but really the story of this whole year has been deals struggling to generate enough demand to get sold. Especially deals as small as the city pricing. So optimistic but cautious. Two things really went into making this deal success. One, we were able to get on our underwriter radar fair pretty early on. So they were aware of kind of the more attention that this took and they did a good marketing effort in telling the story and getting investors. Involved in the interest there. Two, you all might have heard that inflation came out lower than expected this morning. So investors, you know, not seeing as much inflation in the longer term. Are more willing to accept a lower rate across the whole curve. And so you can see in that pricing results, the second kind of section there. Like Brad said, we had fifty five orders mainly from institutional investors, which are big investment firms, banks, and things like that. That have bought this issue and then there were a couple of just individuals placed orders. But all of that totaled a little over eighteen million dollars worth of demand on this bond, which is about three point five million. That's, that's great. So we've got a little bit of the pricing results to that right side. You can see the true interest cost is going to be sort of what we focus on is kind of like a, a whole tell all across the whole bonds. What the cost of borrowing is. Last night, as we were talking with our underwriter, there was about four point three eight. And so we were able to shave off one point one percent there, which is great. And you can see you have a little bit under that three point five million for that project fund and use on the roads here. Below that is just, you can see there what the coupon was on each of those bonds and then what the yield is for investors there. And then the scrap on the bottom, you can see maturity by maturity here, where the orders were placed. How much was oversubscribed, how much was just that one time there on the full maturity. You can see towards the front end, we had a little bit more demands than supply we had. And then on that far side, those three term bonds, we had really good demand there. So we were able to lower those ones, that full one point one percent on the back end and, and achieve that four point two eight true interest cost. So we're happy to, you know, answer any questions you all have, get any, anyone to detail there. But yeah, all in all, we're really, really impressed with the city and how bad and everyone handled that. And there's a, we're more optimistic than what we were thinking, so that's great.
Just another couple of points. So through this process, last time we visited with you, we were preparing for the rating agencies. The city did receive an A one rating, which is very strong, it's a good score. Especially for a city of this, this size. Investment grade credit ratings start at triple B. Then they go up to A, double A, triple A. So a strong rating and you're just one notch, that A one means you're one notch away from a double A. So it goes to a double A three from there. So, so that went well, thanks to the city staff. To bond council and all the participants for helping out with the documentation and putting that together.
Yeah, I wanted to act, you know, totally thank, thank y'all, thank Stiefel, thank O R I. But especially I want to thank our city manager, Kevin Rule. For, you know, his experience in doing this and being able to work with y'all and, and see this through and keep us up to date on what was going on, so thank you, Kevin. The first word from Kevin, from eight thirty, this is like, really?
Yeah, about fifteen minutes in, the whole thing was bought.
He said, it's a good day. It's a good day. Thank you very much.
Y'all timed it perfect.
Yeah, hey, I know we did. We thought about it for much.
Yes, so, so there's some, some legal documentation that'll be, but that's the, the results. Happy to answer any of the questions about the process or the numbers and, and that, that are going to be presented.
Well, some of the numbers that are going to be presented are, are really better than what we were anticipating.
They are, just from last night shaved off about, I think it was fifty five thousand in total debt service. So we're pleased with.
So we kept it, we kept it at the two percent, our two cents that, you know, we've been.
Yes, sir.
And from what I understand, we're going to end up with actually considerably more money than we had thought we might be getting. You know, we were thinking, well, if we shoot for, you know, three point five essentially and, you know, have, you know, two hundred plus to spend, you know, that'd be, that'd be good. And we're going to end up getting almost everything that, I just like the topic of that.
That's right, I understand, that's right.
It's a great day for us.
It is.
Yes, sir. And we owe it all to y'all. Thank you. So, so any other questions, we want to move to number four. And number four is considering possible to take action to adopt an ordinance authorizing and ordering the issuance of the city of Wood Creek, Texas general obligation bonds series twenty twenty three. Prescribing the terms and forms thereof, making other provisions regarding such bonds, including use of the proceeds thereof. And matters incident there too, and there's some specific wording I would. Yes.
I move that the city council adopt the ordinance by the city council of the ordinance. I move that the city council adopt the ordinance by the city council of the ordinance. Author, it's supposed to be Wood Creek, right? Okay, I move that the city council adopt the ordinance by the city council of the city of Wood Creek authorizing, ordering the issuance of city of Wood Creek, Texas general obligation bond series twenty twenty, which is before the council.
Okay, second.
The motion to adopt the ordinance by the city council authorizing, ordering the issuance of the Texas general obligation bonds. Moved by council member Heinz, signed it by council member Brummer. Is there any discussion?
I'll just kind of just summarize really. So basically what this does is it takes and it documents everything that your financial advisors just discussed. And so what you have before you have in, in, in red, the pricing information. So it's the, the ordinance and then the pricing information is in red, which they just discussed. This ordinance approves the issuance of the bonds. It sets out the amortization schedule that they just went through. It levies a tax, so in here you commit each year when you put your budget together, the two cents that Brad was talking about. So levy that tax sufficient to pay the annual debt service. It selects your paying agent registrar, which is going to be B O K F. It also approves the bond purchase agreement, which is the second document that you receive with there. Who is out there marketing and selling your bond. And it also selects BAM or Build America Mutual as the bond insurer. It's a kind of a high level summary of, of what is going on in that ordinance. And I'm happy to walk through or take questions.
Can you confirm that the motion we made was okay? It seemed like there was a typo in it, but. That would be my only concern of this new.
I'll be doing that. This, this process has been going on now for, well, we could easily say two to three years. First of all, what should we do? And second of all, how should we do it? And we've looked at every possible alternative on how to do this, how do we finance it? And it's been a hot topic in the city of Wood Creek for the last two to three years. We went by the skin of our teeth and did Wood Creek Drive with our own funds. And that was good, that was great, it was, it was timely, it needed to be done. Mr. Colley, Mr. Heinz, really appreciate the fact that they are on a nice smooth road again. Because it wasn't, wasn't good and the rest of the city has been experiencing some less than good roads for many, many years now. We had some concerns about the costs to citizens. And we've been assured that, that the cost is relatively low compared to what a lot of us thought it was going to be. And that's, that will be very good. In the long run, I, I think that this particular, with this team and this city manager. And, and this city council, I think that a good job has been done. And I had many doubts for quite some time that I'm with, so.
I would also like to mention that the Platinum Road Committee reviewed a lot of financial options. And what we could do legally and quite optimistically. What we could do to get all of the roads paved at once if we had the economy to scale behind this road. So we didn't want to borrow too much or the bond wouldn't pass, but we wanted to do enough that it would work out. And we didn't go through the early reports, but we had our pre bid meeting on Monday. I wasn't there, but I heard we had three really solid contractors there. We had Hayden, they've been in business thirty years, based out of Houston, secondary office in San Antonio. We had Alpha that did Wood Creek Drive, they've been in business ten years, very satisfactory work. We had Bennett, strongly recommended by Aaron Jones and Higgins County. From the work that they've been doing and they've been in business twenty years. So we have three very good contractors that showed up and appeared to be anxious to do this. And if they didn't think they could do it within the scope by, I don't know that they would have been here and there may be more. So the Platinum Road panel has also been working hard on this and threading the needle here to make all things come together. So. That's my.
Do we need to rework that?
No, the thing that was fine, there was a typo in it, but as it was read, it's.
Do you want to restate it?
Does that allow? Reset the motion?
Reset the motion?
Without the typo?
No, yeah, without the typo.
I move that the city council adopt the ordinance authorizing and ordering the issuance of the city of Wood Creek, Texas general obligation bonds series twenty twenty three, which is before the council. Rather than you get up, would you pass that?
Yeah. There's no getting up in this. There being no further discussion? Good color, and I will tell you that we're going to take a, a break after the role is called, we have assigned some papers. And so we're going to take a little break, five minutes, get that done and then what we.
I have a point of one or another thing. I'm new at this, but when council member Amber made a motion. Then instead of saying if there are second, you just said there's no second. And I guess there was such a short duration, was that sufficient to call for no second?
It was, I mean, we weren't, we weren't really in the regular agenda either. You know, so, I mean, if, if, when, when we get to eleven, can we restate a motion, it says, hey, can we, we'd like to not do this. But I mean, we were, we were not, I mean, we were trying to get into some other stuff, that was my main concern. It wasn't that I didn't want to hear the motion. But, you know, when there wasn't a second, I'm like, okay, well, I guess nobody really wants to deal with this right now, so I just.
Yeah, okay.
Man, you got.
Thank you.
Do you cover open?
Excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Brett Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Laniya Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hendrick.
Aye.
Councilmember David Heinz.
Aye.
Can I put you in?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. Informal vote.
Yay.
Okay, so we'll take a brief recess, we'll, five minutes in that? Seven twenty five. Thank you guys, man, well done, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. Yeah. Okay. Really. Yeah, under. So we have the regular meetings from June fourteenth and approval of financial statements.
Mayor mayor?
Yes, please.
And we approve the regular meeting minutes for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and approval of the financial check for May twenty twenty-two.
I second.
All right, so move the consent agenda, seconded by council member Heinz. Any discussion? Paul.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hendrick.
Aye.
Councilmember David Hines.
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Breckley.
Aye. Yeah, the benefits are good. Thank you. And we'll look through the reports for officers and council liaison, beginning with Mayor Zern.
Kind of going to not meet July fifth to review and per questions about grantables to be included in a citizen survey due to lack of forum.
All right, and they do have a special meeting.
On the evening.
On the eighteen. tentative, tend to be. Order review meeting.
They have wrapped up work on the couple of chapters that they were reviewing, which was fireworks, fire prevention, and the animal chapter. They will not be meeting next month. They have made some requests to review parking and impact their own ordinance to kind of make some adjustments where they can work more freely on what their, you know, their directives there. And so we don't have to go through this request back and forth process. I will make a formal agenda item for them, and that can be actionable. If we have a Jill, a second July meeting, that will be submitted to that.
Parking recreation. Yes, some very good news. They've signed the agreement and they're wiring money today for the place gate. So that will be, that's, that's a lot of cash. Yeah. They paid. Yeah, same on me. Paid, they paid for the gazebo and they're going to begin the slide work very soon. And they'll have a deadline for the, the gazebo gets there. Mentioned the volunteer workers already from Campia today. They're going to come to Augusta Park to, to do some work to, to clean it up a little bit before we get started on the rest of it for the next three Sundays. And there are several citizens that have set forward to donate items to the parks, such as park benches and some other things as well. So thanks to city manager Kevin Rule for how he's helped them to get this going because they couldn't do it without. Thank you. That's good news. Councilmember Bailey, but.
Well, I've already mentioned that we had a good conference with three bidders. And there's a lot of other interests. So now, one, one good thing to, they asked the right questions. We talked to some of the members of the panel and they want to make sure that they're all pre-bidding on a consistent package. So they've agreed with that and they're coordinating with K3s. So the bids are all due by the twenty-fifth of the month. After that, so we'll get together, me, Cody, the chair of the panel, city manager, your representative from K3, and we will evaluate the bids, come up with recommendations. And then the Platinum Road panel will meet on August first. Then the next scheduled meeting of city council is August ninth. So that gives us a few days to make sure we've got everything in order to present to the city to accept our recommended bid. This gives us the perfect time. It can even take a week or so to get things documented. We've got the money coming in, so I'll be able to pay these guys. That's important. And then we have some of the best construction months going. You know, you don't want it too hot. We're going to be heading in the end of August, about September, October. We want to have this by.
Middle of November. Well, they said, you know, they, they said they wanted, you know, it helps it to be a little warm, but not too hot.
Well, yeah. But we also. So anyway, just really good news. Part of what's beautiful is that we, we had a better result on the bond than we were anticipating. That just means more roads will be okay. So, okay, that's it.
Thank you very much. All good news. Tree board.
Member, yes, sir. Tree board's been busy. First of all, we have a vacancy. We have a alternative board member vacancy and we are filling that. We have an advocate that I will be presenting at the next meeting. It's Cheryl Mills, who was also active with the community garden. I've spoken with her. I know she's friends with council member Heinz. She'd be an excellent addition to our committee. So I'll be bringing her application and any other applications for at our next meeting. We're working on grants for oak wood mitigation. Jacob McElroy is looking into those to see if, if those are available. We're kind of basically nosing around to see if there is something that we could help folks or help us at least with oak wood mediation. We're also looking at Arbor Day and Birthday events. Birthday is, of course, sometime next year. Arbor Day, we're looking at two possible dates, October twenty-eighth and November eleventh. I had meant to speak with him, get a bunch of people today, and I just forgot while they were here. So we need to follow up with them and, and see if we can slide it in, in, in their schedule. Because it'd be ideal to do that over there. Because we're also looking to do kind of walking events so we can take people, walk them around and show them what oak wood looks like. You know, and then show them the progression and so that they'll help educate people. We also will be putting in a modest, very modest budget request for activities going forward next year. And that's it.
Good. Thank you. Good work. And city manager.
All right. First thing is bulk pickup is this Saturday, July fifteenth. So make sure your stuff is out Friday night. So it may begin early on Saturday. I think we're going to start about seven AM picking up stuff. So make sure that it's out probably before you go to bed. The brush pickup will start Monday, July seventeenth. This is for any limbs or tree parts that people have left over from our original cleanup. The garage sale, we had a very successful garage sale this weekend on, on July eighth. We had forty-two participants sign up through the city. The five dollars that we charged to get on our map, that is going to parks for them to still spend on our parks. So we've made, there's two hundred dollars that's going to be dedicated to parks through the garage sale. We learned a lot of things from that. Next year, we're not going to have it in July. It's a little too hot. So we're looking at May for our next annual garage sale. And, and we have some other things that we're going to do as well, but when the time gets closer, we'll, we'll mention those. But I want to thank city secretary Suzanne. She did an awesome job on that. She's put that together with the map. We gave it up. You did an outstanding job. For council, I, I put this out, but TML conference is October fourth through sixth in Dallas. If y'all would like to go, please let me know and I can make reservations for you at TML and at the hotel. It's where all of the council members from all over the state of Texas get together. And they have multiple seminars on different topics that you can choose to go sit at. You get to meet other people. You can, you know, see what they're doing in their city. So if you'd like to go, please contact me because it does feel a pass, especially the hotel, because it is a huge event in the state of Texas. So if you haven't been, I would encourage you all to go. That's the one thing out of the year that, that I would recommend. We have, the co-administrator is, we are still taking applications until four PM, four PM Friday, July fourteenth, which is this Friday, I believe.
Yeah.
The city attorney is up. The RFP is up until four PM Thursday, July twenty-seventh. The road RFP for anybody out there maybe watching and wants to, but then the road RFP, that's till July twenty-fifth at one PM. We will be having open to sealed bids at that time. We also have the city arborist that is still up and that is open till field. The road, oh, well, now you took all my thunder, so I won't say it, but we did have a road pre-construction building bid meeting July tenth. It was well received. Parks. Councilmember Hendrick took my thunder on that one. We have purchased, purchased the major equipment. And parks will have a meeting tomorrow at five thirty here at City Hall. And we'll be going over purchasing some of the more smaller pieces. We bought the big pieces, but now we're going to focus on buying all the kind of ancillary little things, the bocce ball, we're not the bocce ball and the signs for that. So if you want to come, that's more at five thirty. Both on the roads and on the parks, I'm sticking to my date that it will be done by Spooktackler, Spooktackler. Spooktackler by October thirtieth. And so we're still on track for that. So I'm still aiming for that. And hopefully that will happen. And that's all I have.
And mayor mayor? Thank you, please. I'm sorry. Could we get an update on the pending business list? Right.
Trying to think what we. Yeah. All right. So here's some stuff that was on there that we've completed. We opened up the, the number one item was the Facebook account and next door that had been set up. City garage sale has been completed. That was on there. Bulk pickup will be completed this weekend. We completed the financial audit. The number two item on that was the four permanent radar signs. We're still waiting on that. Stonehouse Circle, which is the safety drive safely and dark skies sign, we're still waiting on that. The two stops at uh Brook Hollow and Augusta, we're still waiting on that. Um, if, that was two, three and four respectively. Um, the review vendor contracts was number five and that's in progress, we we are looking at those. The zoning map number six is.
The zoning map's done, it's a K map, it's not.
Okay, so that's halfway done, number six. Seven was a year-round tree signs, we haven't done anything on that. Uh, number eight was staff communication process, uh, staff communication policy, and that's in progress. City, number nine was a city, city arborist, the RFP is out for bid. Number eleven was co-administrator, the RFP is out to bid. Uh, the policy and procedure binder, number twelve, we're working on that with updating the policies. Number thirteen was a long-term parking permit, which is still outstanding. That was what y'all had numbered, but still it's in, what we've also been working on is uh the city attorney, that RFP is out. The the bar, the parview parking sign, that has been all done except for the actual parking sign, the post is there. Uh, city parks, we're working on that, that is a progress. The CBD, CDBG grant, that is awaiting.
Did we get a five, like?
November, December, they will, they will get back with us.
Thank you.
Um. Uh, RFP for the road projects, that's out, that we're working on that. Uh, bond issuance, we just completed that tonight, we're gonna put completed on that. Um. Above ground pools, that was sent to P and Z, we are currently working on a budget. And that will, next, the next meeting we have, whether it's the twenty-sixth or the um second to Wednesday in. August, that will be a big budget date, that will be the whole budget, so it will be uh, we'll go through a lot of stuff on on the budget and actually look at some real hard numbers. Um.
Great, thank you so much.
There must be going on, stuff we're working on?
Oh, fifty-five?
Oh, yeah, uh, we're working on still installing the water fountain at the triangle that was donated. That will be, the the base will be poured when they pour the con- concrete for the um gazebo at the triangle, so that will be done as that. Uh, street inventory, me and Mayor Roscoe have gone out and documented all the signs. Every, every, every sign, and so all, we really just need to put it on some type of uh. Make a list of it, because we we know where they're all at, but it hasn't been put into a formalized thing yet.
And we've had that in a document, correct, that needs to be in a document?
Correct, correct, there's there's a, there's an old, there's an older document, we just have to cross-check and see it. And then I'm looking at to actually have a a pinpoint where um.
G I S.
G I S map, that will be at each corner, will have the the sign that is, because there's many intersections that have many signs, we we realize.
And I have photo documentation of all of that.
Yes, and we do have photo documentation of it. So we're still working on that, uh, website and meaning code, I got a quote for updating our website that Albert.
That whole merging.
Yes, uh, so I have to, we're going back and forth and talking on that, so that's frequently coming, um. Yeah, that's about it, oh, we're working.
Yes, sir, uh, I I know that you were working uh with the engineers in terms of getting kind of a survey about traffic calming. Uh, you may have addressed that, I may have just missed that, so what are we on that?
Yes, they are putting together a proposal for a price for us to break back to.
Okay, do I need to, I guess, submit an agenda item for next next hearing, I mean, I'm kinda relying on you to be doing that, but do I need to be agenda, making a certain agenda item sign or?
I'm for, um, actually, the mobility was actually uh voted, there's a, was it not moved to roads? Yes, it was voted to go to roads first.
The survey, the question, not the proposal for a survey for traffic calming.
So survey questions were sent to, not the survey. I I think, I think K3s were, was gonna do kind of a review of.
Right, of all the, of all the roads.
Let's call that a study.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so they had, we had said that there there were a couple places where they were looking at, you know, just overall, you know, traffic safety. Um, and we asked them to to look at, you know, traffic calming options, like one of the, one of the items or one of the areas that we said, okay, well, go ahead and look at this. And we had some, some discussions about the um, the funny um four-way stop sign at Brook Hollow. I got the Jet Miller and to get some feedback on that before we, before we made that, so so there's that. But that was part of that, that study um by K3s to see how.
Yeah, I should have a, I should have a.
Survey, that's a, that's a.
Where, where, where are we on that?
We're just waiting for the proposal back from K3s for a number on the.
Okay.
Is that okay if I give seventeen items?
The chair keeps going, I don't know.
Thank you.
You're mostly, what, what I used to mean, I talk.
All right, was there anything else for the, anything else for the city manager?
The record of what they choose.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Okay, we're gonna move on to um item number six under new business. I'm not missing it, right? Okay, number six was to discuss and take up collection on resolution point three seven quota three, amending the regular, helping meeting frequency location.
Mayor, mayor?
Please.
I move we adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh seven dash twelve dash oh three.
One second.
Segmented by council member Hines. Discussion.
Mayor, I understand that this is about amending a rate, the regular council meeting, its frequency, its location and its time. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to this, and that is that we uh have one regular meeting per month primarily because. Uh. It's really, I believe, all we really need if we were to use our time well. And uh it would relieve our city staff with uh what they have for so many open meeting uh meetings already. It's uh, it's uh quite a uh. Uh, there's a lot of work for them every time they do that, we have so many that uh to add another regular meeting would be very difficult for them. Um. So basically, yes, that we would have a.
Are you amending?
Yeah, I'm friendly amendment.
Okay, so your amendment is?
That we have one regular.
One regular meeting, which is what we have now.
And I'm saying that we would leave it that, yes.
I'll take it that.
Yeah.
Mayor, mayor?
Please.
Um, so if there's any confusion, I would like to explain how, what the resolution is doing is. Currently, we have one regular meeting and one special meeting, the quorum for the special meeting is higher and it makes it more complex. And it's harder for us, so most cities in the state of Texas, their council has two meetings a month. It's, it's a very common standard that is. Um, we've been getting a lot done and all this is doing is removing the special meeting and just having two regular ones. The second and the fourth.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we, we, we.
That was, and that was the goal, um, is to have two regular meetings, get our work done, have one at three in the afternoon. So it's not as much of a burden on staff. Um, and, because we would still have the special meetings, I mean, it's that we've been calling it the meetings for, you know, ever since I came there. And because we had a lot of work to do, and we, I mean, our agenda's been full, I would rather see two regular meetings with happy agenda items. Um, or, or say, hey, listen, you know, we don't really need this second meeting this month because, you know, it was kind of slow. So, but, I mean, we have discussed with staff, I mean, they're, they're, you know, well aware, I mean, we're working, you know, with their advice. And um, and, you know, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, city managers, but um. Uh, who has a hand, actually?
You got it.
I'm gonna do it.
Okay, um, so when we discussed it before, we had those. In my mind, I was thinking of the eleventh, there are meetings and things, so we really want everything there. But the idea of just, and then we were having a special one, I see the problem of the different voting block for the second meeting. But if we do this, it's like, could we put a termination date would be, um. If we need to get caught up, then can we put a, let's review in three months or something like that? Or when we discussed this before, we talked about limiting the number of ID, uh, agenda items to two per council member. Or some way to put limits on this so that meetings didn't go on so long.
One of the best ideas I've I've heard is just put a timing on. Yeah, the, the meeting will be three hours and if we don't get to those agenda items, I go to the next agenda. You know, but um, but if if the, again, you know, it's standard practice. Um, you know, we're gonna almost certainly have at least a couple meetings, so it's easier to have a regular meeting than a special meeting.
Mayor, I have a question, um, if if we authorize a second regular meeting, we don't have to have that meeting, but if we do have a second meeting, it becomes a regular meeting, is that right?
Right, that's the purpose of this.
Yeah, and there there are two things that are going on here, um, and, you know, I'm not exactly speaking to the amendment. Um, because, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do too is to broaden the um, broaden the possibility for where we can have the meetings. So that was limiting as well. Um, and so we just said it, it's, you know, we we added the VFW as a, as, but before, if we had a, if we wanted to have. A meeting on our regular day, but we were expecting a crowd and wanted to go to the VFW.
Yeah.
Um, or, you know, before Campion today, um, it would become a special meeting and we needed a super majority.
Right.
So, so this is, this is just sort of to to clean things up a little bit and, you know, frankly, if we, if we go council member Hamburg and, you know, we're not. You know, we're just really efficient and we're not needing that meeting, then we go back to the ordinance and, and change it, but this just streamlines things.
Yeah, let me, let me finish up, um, if if that being understood, I I have an amendment as well uh to this. I I would ask that uh we stipulate that, um, first of all, that each council member can submit two agenda items. Uh, each meeting lasts for three hours max and last at rule seven uh is amended instead of having two-thirds of voting members. Uh, deciding to close debate that a majority in vote to close debate, that's in rule seven, so that would be the amendment. Almost three items, two agenda items, three hours max, and a majority can can post debate.
Um, is I made, mayor?
You just, you just seconded his vote as an amendment.
So, okay.
Um, so yes, you can.
So, yeah, let me get to that. You're gonna be, um. Council member, what council employee just referred to on, um, there's, that one about a specific. Number. Where's it?
Rule seven.
Um, that is actually taken from our rules.
Right.
I'm sorry.
He just seconded, seconded.
The council has a pretty broad discretion to adopt itself, you can take parts of Robert rules, you can take your own creative rules. Uh, however is the most efficient way that the council agrees.
Sure, mayor.
Yeah, um, I did a little research on this as well and US Senate uses the simple majority for closure. Um, and like you said, we have the discretion to do that if we so choose and we've done that in the past. As using a simple majority rather than uh two-thirds majority.
All right, so um, do you have your hand up?
I'd like to speak in general, I'm living in residence, I was talking in. Okay, all right, um, I support this resolution for a specific reason. One, I appreciate that it allows the city manager to add items um as needed frequently, there's city business. That needs to be accomplished and this changes that for staff, so I support that. I support the three PM time of the regular meeting because it does address citizens' concerns of the later meetings occurring. Um, so that would give people two options to attend meetings and you can always watch them as well at your leisure, if you can't tune in the night of. Um, I think it also helps alleviate some of council members who have shared concerns about having to attend the special meeting. Because we lack forum then and then we're always kind of like jostling to try to schedule that data on everyone's schedule, so now we have to choose that meeting. If one of us needs to go away and can, you know, like, so it just kind of cleans up the scheduling for staff. And I like that the three PM meeting would be happening during their normal hours, but that we're keeping that evening meeting to honor citizens who work for attending. Um, I do believe the three-hour timeout moment is a good idea. I I actually knew the person who mentioned that first, I was like, why don't you just cut it off, not having a deal, a bump item. So I do support that portion of the suggested amendment. I I think the two-item limit is a little bit concerning because sometimes we have uh more, but I understand the objective of it. I think two is a little bit restrictive and I would, you know, request that maybe we consider like three or four, um, but, you know. The mayor has always approached me when I've submitted items and asked if I would be willing to bump it. And I don't think I've ever told you no, so maybe one time I put up a little fight, but um, so, but in reality, you know, if council member, if. If this get, if we're looking like it's a heavy schedule, then we do have that other meeting to bump to and it won't be a special meeting. So we don't have to worry about the forum issues, accidentally failing items that are, you know, important to us as a body. Um, because that has occurred, you know, just sort of like, oh, you know, the vote. Um, so I do support the resolution in its totality, I would be interested in the three-hour cutoff, I would be interested, I don't mind restricting items, I think two is too, too few. Um. That, I am a little bit concerned about, you said majority votes, you say super majority, that's what two-thirds is, you said simple majority, okay. I'm a little bit concerned about that, but we only had called to question issues recently. So, you know, don't really see it being a a problem and you've already stated uh speaking time limits. So I would like for us to leave that portion of the resolution alone unless we see an ongoing issue with the new time limits that Mayor Roscoe is. Kind of sends out that that, you know, reminder about in the terms of speaking. So if we can monitor the meeting with those standards, I would like to stick with Robert's rules, preferably, just because it is a good general guidance. Um, other than that, I believe that was all of, uh, oh, and then the the addition of locations, I think, is really important and I I would like to see that catch.
Uh, the amendment, um, we have the fully amendment, you know, on the floor, that is two agenda items, three-hour limits. And uh majority to close the debate.
Good, I, um, point of uh, counter amendment, could, could I have the order of all the the motions?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the the amendment, so the the last amendment is, is on, is pulleys. Your second, um, about limiting number of agenda items, limiting length of time of meetings. Um, and the majority to close debate, the Hamburg amendment was, was, which is, was segmented by by council member Bailey. Is just to go with the one regular meeting, you know, online. And then the main motion is to accept the resolution.
And we would need to vote on how, uh, Mayor Proton police amendment.
Fully, fully, then Hamburg and then the main.
So.
Is that a take all or nothing or reset or some parts?
You know.
No, I would.
Mayor? He sent a memo um to all of us outlining how, you know, the center of the main motion once moved to seconded, no longer holds it, then goes to the floor. And then we debate that and uh, it's either accepted or or passed. What I was thinking with this, um, is that if somebody really didn't like the motion, they would be the last amendment, because then instead of the first one with the, the motion getting to talk about why it is this, the last person who was opposed would get all the good arguments, be wanting back, so that's why I think this is the nullity. And in fairness, that's, we kind of lose sight of, of what we're trying to do. So it, it really either needs to be strictly adherent to, or somehow open it all up, but it, it can't be more like it's happening right now. You know what I'm saying? Okay, so the last time, the last of, of end though, is to two items, three hours, simple majority.
So, so fully's amendment would apply whether we do one meeting a month or two meetings a month. So his me, his, his motion applies to, you know, our meetings overall. Uh, we're talking about those meetings, um, but first of all, you know, councilmember Hamburg, you know, talked about an individual meeting, you know, so these, that amendment would, would, would apply whether it's, whether it's councilmember Hamburg's single meeting, or whether it's the original resolution.
Is that always the case, or do they think that?
It depends on the language of the amendments.
Okay, but let's just say, in this, for instance, it certainly would apply to either the original one or.
What, what the memo stated about owning the amendment is that, is that when an amendment is, is proposed, um, is saying that, that you don't, you don't get to say, well, I don't accept your amendment, I don't, I, I, I won't accept your amendment. You know, so you can't, you know, that's, that's what we're trying to do, but if, but if an amendment is proposed, it belongs to the, to the body and is debated and either passed or defeated, and then you go to the, the secondary, and then you go to the main motion. You know, so we've got a tertiary motion on the floor, um, that we're debating now, and that is, um, Mayor Burton fully, unless I'm missing something.
Yeah.
I'm just not, I might have touched this. You guys have, you know, I, I, I wanna try to correct you all, because I'm probably paying my job, but it is all or nothing. You, you can take whatever parts of Robert's rules you like, you can create your own rules separately, you can do one set of rules for one meeting and a different set of rules for another. You can have a standing agenda item at the end of the first meeting every month, uh, whether or not to hold a second meeting. And there's all sorts of ways to tackle this, but I, I want y'all to understand, you can customize it if you see fit.
What's it, in that, kind of, kind of, sort of, kind of customize this proposal, this resolution, you know, to, to create a better resolution, right? So. Were you speaking to the amendment?
Yeah, I would ask, would you be willing to adjust it to, um, like, three items per council member or four? Would you consider a slightly higher number?
Can I respond? Well, would you consider two items subject to the mayor's discretion? Like if you say, hey, I really need three items, and boom, you get them, you know, generally it's two.
So you're gonna add two items, but the Mayor Rasko could add additional items at his discretion?
If you need more than two, you ask him, and he, sure, you know, well.
Well, if it's in the resolution, we would need that language.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two items per councilperson subject to the mayor's discretion.
Uh, that sounds like you could limit it down even. Just have, maybe you can tweak the word.
What we'd say is, you know.
No less.
No less than two items subject to the mayor's discretion.
I like that.
More than two, more than two items, except as.
Yeah, I can live with that.
Major's discretion.
Yeah, I, I, I like that.
Um, permanent, like, question then, if I may, um, is it only councilmember, or are we including staff and women?
Yeah, well, Sam is gonna come up with, I mean.
That's why I was like.
Yeah, this is councilmember, because, uh, you know, like, here, you know, the manager had, you know, several, there, there may be.
That's why I was like, well, are we?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, this might as well.
Well, let's say two, and, and, and you need more.
I wasn't finished, that's, I mean, I would like to finish, um, and then I would ask that you consider a known, the, the simple majority to allow, um, the enforcement of the speaking times, um, just for a period of time, because we can always come back to our resolutions and, and then then if they're not working. But I would, I would like to stick with Robert's rules as much as possible.
I agree, man, um, I, I, I just, I, I get kind of frustrated, and a lot of times, we got three votes that wanna be won, and we, and we get stuck, you know? And I, I think that three people ought to say it's enough, let's go, you know? I, I hear you, man, I mean, I'm, I'm starting with this, but I'm, I'm gonna stick with the majority.
Yeah.
You know, but the thing is, is that no one person can just go, I call the question and shut everybody down, you still gotta get a majority vote, you know? I, I think it's alright, Deborah, I mean, I'm gonna stick by that, you know?
I just have one more question, that.
I'll have a question.
I haven't spent it, um, would, at the end of this resolution, or this discussion this evening, would we be seeing a second document with these edits since we're making pretty substantial edits? And so we wouldn't be passing this resolution if we proceeded with these amendments this evening? Is that accurate, my understanding?
The only, the only thing is that if, if we pass this tonight, you know, as, as amended, and, and, you know, allow staff to, to include the amendments and get a clean copy, um, then, you know, we could say that the July twenty sixth meeting is a regular meeting. If we don't, then it's a special, this is what it's worth.
Mr. Mayor, like I said, um, I did the math on, on three items, and I don't know how, how hard it will be for you to resist when, um, when Ms. Bailey, or Mr. Foley, or any of the rest of us say, can I please have three this month? And all of a sudden, we're fifteen, just like that, and.
You know.
No, it's not a matter, it's not a matter, that's a matter of.
Yeah, I don't like, I, I don't like going to eleven, like, night either, just, just for what it's worth. And, and as we said, you know, it's like, I, um, I get agenda requests. Um, our, our, our process for submitting agenda items is gonna change with the municipal change. Um, we won't be doing it the way we have been, um, so, so that will be a change, so that's coming. Um, and so it, it'll be a little bit more, um, uh, robust in being able to, to see what's up, but, but, I mean, if we say that it's gonna be, you know, two items, and that's the goal, um, and we have two regular meetings a month, you know, that's four, four items a month. Um, and, you know, if you really need one more and you come, come, you know, knocking on my door, then you better have a good reason, because our, our rule says, you know, two, you know, lots of discretion in there, so I would, I would, uh, I, I don't think there's gonna be a problem there, but that's up to you all.
And this is a process, it seems like we're building this with the people adjustments, and if we had those limits, then I would be all, I'd be okay with going to the two minutes, two meetings a month that were normal meetings, so, um, one can vote on.
We, I mean, if y'all quit discussing, we can go now.
My last, my, I think.
Oh, my God.
Uh, as for staff, we really don't care if it's one meeting or two meetings, uh, we just can't do that specifically meeting on the following Tuesday, there's just, there's no way to do it, so, so what we have with, if we do do two meetings, is that we'll have two weeks in between the meetings, the only thing that you all will need to realize that if there is something on the first meeting, and you all want it to come back with changes, it won't be on the next meeting, it will be the following meeting, so if it's on the, the, the second Tuesday of the month, and we have to do anything to it and it needs to become back, it will no, it will not go on the fourth Wednesday. It will actually, the next time you will see it will be on the, the following month. Okay, so I just wanna, because we just can't, we don't have the time or staff to turn around that fast, and that's one of the things with the special meeting is that we just couldn't, it was a great idea, it just didn't work out.
Yeah.
So we, we don't, we can do two a month, we can do one a month, that's council's decision, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that when, when, when an item is pushed, that it wouldn't be seen at, at the next meeting. That's all I have to say.
Alright, let me say this real quick, this council has worked so hard, man, you know, we really have a ton of work, and everybody here has done amazing work, and none of this is just laughing at anybody, you know, I mean, this is, I'm so proud and, and, and um, happy, you know, with what, what everyone has done. This is just trying to tweak a little bit, you know, and I hope it's accepted in, in that spirit, because I, I really so respect and, and just love what, what we've been able to do, I don't care what anybody says, we've done good work. Just make it a little bit easier on us and a little bit easier on the staff, that, that's the only reason for this, man. So, um, I mean it from the heart, so thanks to all of you, so anyway, that's it.
Alright, so, we're ready to vote on the.
Point of order, uh, did you accept that change and is that change on the record?
The changes.
I'll, 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 I'll read them. The amendment that Mayor Proton fully, um, suggested and has, has changed is that um, two items, um, would be accepted with others, um, at the discretion of the mayor, um, that meetings will be held to three hours in length from beginning to end, and that it would take a majority to close, uh, debate on an act. Mr. Mayor, simple majority?
Yes.
The last amendment. Vote.
Okay.
And this is about Mr. Paul's.
This is on, this is on fully amendment.
It, it's all or nothing, it's, it's not three separate amendments. Well, if y'all are following the rules, I mean.
Okay, mine is all or nothing, right?
Correct, yeah.
I'm not following that, no, my amendment's all or nothing, you're not going to get pieces from my amendment.
No, 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 yeah, it's all, I thought you were talking about. Okay, yeah.
Four points that he had.
They're all, this is the amendment, as, as with his accepted change to the two plus, we'll call it, so that is, that's the fully amendment that we're voting on.
Councilmember Heinz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Brett Foley?
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Crummer?
Nay.
And.
Is that yay?
Nay.
Nay, he said nay. Councilmember Bob Hamburg?
Alright. The votes are four yays, one nay, we have it, um, the amendment, um, the secondary amendment, uh, Councilmember Hamburg's is the whole, um, one meeting rather than two, uh, segmented by Councilmember Bailey.
Yeah, was you wanting to go forward there, Bob?
Yes, I'd like to, okay.
Uh, Councilmember Bob Hamburg?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Heinz?
Nay.
Mayor Proton Brett Foley?
Nay.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
Nay.
Councilmember Chris Crummer?
Nay.
One high, four nays, we have the same odds, um, we'll go to the main motion, which is to accept the, the, um, resolution, number twenty-three oh seven twelve three two.
Actually, it's, that, that's a, there's a type one, it's actually gonna be oh three.
Oh, three, okay, it's two.
Has amended, right?
Has amended.
Yeah, has amended. Has amended. Vote on the main motion.
Councilmember Chris Crummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hamburg?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Heinz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Brett Foley?
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
That vote is in. This is resolution pathogen, thank you very much for your, for your input and, and concern.
What, sorry, oh, we're, oh, okay. Sorry, we're gonna try to prepare the amended, uh, resolution ASAP.
Okay. Um, with that, um, this, my question is, does that make the twenty-six a regular meeting?
Yes, I mean, it does.
Okay, so by passing the resolution tonight, make those changes, we're all good, so the twenty-six is a regular meeting, thank you.
Now, if you, if, if we all wish not to have the regular, on that day, you can always cancel.
Yeah, and, and a standing agenda item at the end of the first meeting, you know, uh, are we having it or not?
We'll put that in, yeah, we'll look that in very soon, or to see if we really want to have.
But it is a regular item on the, on the agenda. Right before or after announcement is? Alright, okay, item number seven, um, this is, um, city manager rule brought this, the social media policy approval, um, resolution twenty-three oh seven twelve four. Um, and I would entertain a motion to discuss and take appropriate action.
I move that we discuss and take appropriate action on resolution two oh two three dash zero seven dash one two dash zero four, amending the city wood creek social media policy approval November nine, two thousand twenty-two.
What's second?
Second back, councilmember Bailey? Say you want me to call first, second, after. Twenty seconds? I just don't use this company jumping. Okay, so, uh, the, uh, moved by councilmember fully, segmented by councilmember, our, our, it's Mayor Burton fully, uh, segmented by councilmember Bailey, um, on social media policy.
Well, since I, I guess I'm, I'm going to just say this, my understanding is this, uh, essentially clarifies our policy with regard to, uh, official, uh, city communications, that it, that it comes from the city manager, but it doesn't curtail individuals in terms of how they operate, uh, in their individual capacity, in their free speech rights, is that correct?
It is. Yeah, basically, this new social media policy, or the revised social media policy, um, just sort of clarifies that it is an internal process, the city manager is, is responsible, can delegate to, to staff or others um, to actually do the posts, we recognize that, that, that the way they're set up, that is basically one way education, um, unless we need a survey or something, and then we would, would change that, so it, uh, it is, it is giving us a social media presence without opening up a can of worms, the, the fully two-way uh, social media presence.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, this one is called draft, does that completely replace, um, the earlier social media policy?
Yeah, I drafted that from scratch, it was, it was just, it was too challenging to try to amend it.
Okay, alright, because I couldn't, there was completely different permits, but, so this is the new one, this one is.
It's, it's an option for y'all to consider, right, it's just, I'm trying to present a venue of options and, and rather than, this, this is one of the more challenging issues facing cities all over the state, right? And, and so it's, it's a completely free market as a result of legislative changes and judicial changes. Uh, this is really designed to be the lowest threshold of mandatory issues and, and applies only to the official social media page of the city, has no bearing on what all five or six of y'all can do on your own social media pages.
And, um, just to continue what, uh, Mayor was saying, I read a lot of different issues with different cities, and it's when you have that two-way communication and audio police it and all of that chaos, but that's not gonna be the situation, right? Like you said, this is just gonna be info, and, um, and like you said, unless there's an occasional survey.
If, if you will, I mean, if you allow me, um, you know, it's not a whole lot different than what we do with our, our text and email blasts that go out, and you can't really respond to, you're not gonna start a conversation. and email blasts that go out and you can't really respond to. You're not going to start a conversation with, you know, staff who blasted out those emails. It's sort of the same thing. It's, it's another way to reach people, um, where they're comfortable. Um, and they're more comfortable on Facebook or Nextdoor, then they're going to get the same information that was blasted out to the rest of us on email. Um, they just prefer a different medium. So we're just sort of expanding, I mean, we already have expanded our, our, like, media presence, if you will. Um, but it remains a, um, basically a one-way communication. Councilmember Heinz.
So I compared both policies. I think, uh, interim city attorney Gordon's policy just kind of slums down the existing one. It already prevented that two-way communication that was in the previous one. Uh, one of the significant changes though is it does eliminate the mayor's ability to use a social media. So I just wanted to make sure we were okay with that. And then, um, I wanted to address actually a public comment, uh, made about the concerns about record retention. Uh, I recently deleted my Nextdoor account and before I did that, there, there is, they save everything. And so I just grabbed my entire file and it took not even a day for them to send me my whole file and a zip. They maintain all of those records, same with Facebook. And so, uh, you know, and then I didn't see it specifically addressed and I, I could have missed it. This, this idea that, and staff should already know this, they can't delete a post unless it's to correct an error essentially, you know, and like immediately, like, oh, you posted, oh, no, I left off the date. You deleted that, fixed it with the date. You could also just issue a correction, edit, edit correction on the post. But this is like, we have this basic training over and over through T M L about how, you know, if you need to edit something, try to leave the original, make sure the edit's clear, all of that's there. And then, um, so far I haven't noticed an issue with y'all turning off the comments, but that is something you have to, like, do every single time. So that's a little bit annoying. But yeah, Facebook maintains the records as well. And even if you do delete something, Facebook actually fills it, there's a record. So, um, the records retention stuff isn't an issue, it's free access. Um, meaning like we don't have to pay for it. So, I mean, I, I think the policy is just the new cleanup version. Um, it, you know, passes it through resolution like we need. And the mayor, the mayor was the only thing I was a little bit concerned about.
I want to ask about that.
Yeah.
Um, because, I mean, the way I read it was that the, the city manager designate, um, if the city manager says, hey, can you help with this?
Right.
Then, you know, the mayor or you.
The many council.
Yeah.
Yes.
It could be, you know, it's just in the, in the, that's the, the primary responsibility of the city.
Right, and the previous policy just there explicitly stated the mayor had the right, but I support the change. I think it's good practice just so that, um, just so it's one person, you know what I mean? It just makes it easier for everything if it's streamlined that way.
I'm a little confused because I have looked at, at the last one and the one before it. The one before expressly says that, that, that the city manager has total authorization and doesn't even mention the mayor. Am I correct?
Which one are you looking at? Because the first one, the, the one below, the one that is in place now, missing from that.
Yeah, that's the new one.
Okay, so it has a big red graph on it and that has a five, the, okay. That is, it, it was not clear because the last one, this is the second of the last one. It looks like, I believe, am I right? That the last one is in a very different font.
No, yeah, the, the last one is the one that's currently in place.
Yeah, what you're looking at on page, it's, you know, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, that's, um, and on to, uh, forty-seven, that's the, that's the draft of the ordinance that would replace, um, okay, the social media policy from forty-eight on. So it's number five, authority of the city manager on the one that we're talking about? Yeah, authority of the city manager, yeah, number five. That's the, that's what we're voting on.
Yeah, that's, that's the new.
That's the draft that we're voting. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I'm currently on Nextdoor. I'm not seeing an official city account being used, but a personal account with your name on it. And I was curious if we're going to have an official city account. So that, because the reason I'm thinking of this is that a personal account, citizens may not know that it's the, this is the official city account. Um, and I also wanted, you know, for longevity's purpose, that we have, we, we created a, you know, and I can see that our Wood Creek seal being possibly the profile tag. Um, our current social media policy, and I'm going to kind of go off of what Councilmember Heinz was talking about, includes this language, which is, the mayor may utilize the posting feature of social media profiles for our official city communications. Um, the new proposal removes it. I amend that the language be included that states in the absence of the city manager, the mayor is authorized to fulfill the duties set forth in the social media policy. And this new draft come back to Council for a group.
And second up.
Okay, so the amendment is that in the absence of the city manager, the, the mayor fulfilled the role.
Yeah, um, may I make a complaint on this amendment? Um, the reason being, um, we did have a sign when we did have a city manager and for longevity's sake, for having social media be really good, solid, long time, um, if there is for any reason an emergency or anything needs to happen where the city manager is not available to assign a designate or, just the mayor can stop individuals. Because when we didn't have a city manager, the administrative task automatically default to the mayor. So it like, that just still exists in this document as well.
So we have a amendment, a second, you speaking to the amendment? Councilmember Bailey?
Yes, um, I guess that makes me seconded.
No, no, it's, no, sorry, I'm seconded.
I, I was just wondering if the city manager has a designate. Wouldn't that cover that?
Yes, we have a designate. I don't, I don't personally use Facebook or Nextdoor. I just, I just don't. Um, so going to your question, if, if I may, your question about, uh, Nextdoor, we tried to set up a, a city, uh, or a company profile and it wouldn't let us.
Based on that, based on the, apparently the email address or manager that we can use, we tried three different email addresses and they all been used.
So we, so, so we're still, it's, I don't know, Nextdoor is, we're having trouble setting up a, uh, company profile. I don't, I mean, and so, and I can't change the, because the one I'm using is Britain's old one. I didn't even set up a new one. That's his that he was using under the city of Wood Creek.
Did you just change the name or not?
I just changed the name.
Well, I'm wondering.
And so, but we have, Taffy is the one that sends out all the email blasts. She updates the website, she does the posts to Facebook and to, um, Nextdoor on all of those. And we have kind of a, if it goes on an email blast, it's going on the other two social media platforms as well. And we have learned that face, you have to go on each individual one and turn off the comments. But that's because we don't personally use it, so you didn't know. But then going forward, you will.
So the question could be that rather than, um, Kevin Rule's name, it could be City of Wood Creek is the name. Is there any side of the plan to change them?
Oh, we can look at it.
Yeah, yeah, what we're trying to change is, yeah, there's more into that than that. So yes, that's what.
I was thinking like a thought in the head, when I go to Nextdoor and I see, I would like, hmm, you know, citizens may not know.
Yes, that's, that's a different goal.
Yes, yeah.
I had a tip to, uh, the city of Wood Creek does have like a page on there. So in the meantime, while you're working on that, if you, uh, constantly post to that page or tag it, then it creates a stream of City of Wood Creek stuff. So when you search City of Wood Creek, that little thing, page comes up, you can see some posts that are tagged with it. And so there is that feature to, so you're in that, that thread, especially in the interim while you're working on the name issues.
I'll get Taffy to work on it.
And then.
Rushing to me.
Yeah, and it's kind of. If staff has any issues, I'm more than happy to spend thirty minutes to walk through some of these little steps. You can also add more to your name where it has City of Wood Creek manager and things like that, just to clarify, um, who you are and that you're not operating as a, as your own personal, yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we'll, we'll get it, we'll work on it and we'll get Taffy or whatever, maybe one or two of y'all can sort of, for us.
All right, so, um, we did have an amendment, um, to the maximum floor that in the evidence of the city manager, the mayor would pick over the, um, administrative role, um, on the social media accounts that was moved by Councilmember Drummond, seconded by Councilmember Heinz. We love, it will be, it's a pleasure. You want to vote on this? Vote on the amendment, please.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Germer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Heinz.
Aye.
And Mayor for Tim Brett Polley.
Aye. The amendment passes, um, go back to the main motion to accept the resolution.
Mayor for Tim Brett Polley.
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Germer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Heinz.
Uh.
All right, the resolution passes as amendment, as amended by two zero. Um, item number eight is, uh, on city's fund balance policy, amending the fund balance policy approved August tenth point two. And this one is similar to the, to the previous resolution on that we got the new draft. I'm having the, the old resolution that we're operating under, uh, beneath that. So if you want to to, um, outline the fund balance policy resolution, please.
What, the, the main difference between the two is, and, and like the previous one, we really couldn't just redline it just because of the format and everything. But, but here's what the change, the major change is we removed the permit, uh, language that was in the previous resolution and we increased, um, the unassigned fund balance from two months to six months. So basically what we said, instead of requiring four hundred and thirteen thousand, we really would like at least three hundred and thirty-nine thousand in the fund balance. Um, that's G F O A best practices to have six months. And as you can see from the last ice storm, you know, it was two hundred and fifty thousand. So I would like just to increase the, uh, reserve fund, the six-month reserve rather than the two-month reserve.
All right, I understand, but then, um, I'm, I'm passing this, uh, resolution.
I move that we, uh, approved resolution two oh two three dash zero seven dash one two dash zero one, City of Wood Creek, Texas, uh, to update the city's fund balance policy and amending the fund balance policy approved August tenth, coming two thousand twenty-two.
And second.
Councilmember Bailey. Further discussion? Questions for City Manager Rule?
I, I would like to, real quick one. I've seen, um, Mr. Rule act with everything that he's done so far in the city of Wood Creek. Um, last thing being our, our steeple, uh, transactions and how successfully they've been. Um, there was some concern by this council that perhaps it wasn't going to, it wasn't a good decision to use them. Turns out, I think it was a great opportunity to use them. And I would like to piggyback and say that this also sounded like a sound decision to be made.
Right, um, Councilmember Drummond, do you agree on that?
Um, yeah, it's a question on the, the, our current fund balance, um, has the language that says no more than fifty thousand in unrestricted fund balance. And then the city's debt fund balance shall not fall below five hundred thousand? Could you explain the reason for?
I don't know the reason why, but that's normally not in fund balance.
Okay.
It was added by a council member at the time.
Okay, I was just wondering if that, that explains it. It's not usually part of this kind of ballot, my friend. Thank you.
Any further discussion? No.
I did have one question. This, we, I didn't have, we didn't have our meeting, we can link up. So when multiple categories of fund dollars are available for expenditure, the city will start with the most restricted category and spend those funds first before moving down to the next category with available funds. Could you just ex- like, explain that to me and, you know, as if I'm just walking in the room and never look at this stuff?
Yeah, the, the restricted funds are your bank funds, your municipal court funds, your street maintenance fund and your debt service fund. Um, let's say that we were spending, um, or spending money on court security. Okay, because if you do a municipal court, a. You get the court security, you can buy, you know, cameras and stuff and look for the court. So you would first use it out of the restricted funds because it, it can only be used for certain things. If there wasn't enough in the court security, then you would go to the next level, which would be the, um, general fund balance that you would use. So you'd use the most restricted funds that you could and then you'd go to no less. So you'd use the restricted funds first.
Yeah, I have to follow up. So this po- policy doesn't undermine the need for a budget amendment, meaning that we couldn't just move funds from one budgeted line item to another or use funds out of a budgeted line item that for a purpose it was not allocated, correct?
On this, on this one, you can move it from line to line, you just can't move from fund to fund.
Okay, so.
So.
Is there a concern over not, like, I'm concerned about being able to just dip into other line items for funds, um, without budget amendments? So is that process still protected?
No, let's say that, um, like right now, we're over on the, um,
Holiday decorations.
Holiday, holiday decorations, yeah, we're over five hundred dollars. But we still have excess money in park maintenance or, or mowing. We can take that money and move it to that, that line item without coming through a, a budget amendment. The only time that you come is if you're, because, because what you're going to look at is the bottom number on there, how much. Before, all you had, you had all your restricted funds and all your general funds into one account, okay? As you, if you look on the, uh, financials now, we haven't broken up by the restricted funds. So we can't move money from, from the different funds over to another fund. Now, the general fund right now is all one, it has everything, it has payroll, I mean, it has payroll, it has parks, it has public works and everything. Eventually, probably not this year, next year, we will have a parks department and we will have a public works department for the roads. At that time, you couldn't move money, let's say for, uh, pothole repair over to salary. Okay, that would take a budget amendment. But I could take street maintenance for potholes and I could move it to rather weight clearing. So you can move it within the fund, but you can't move it out of the fund to a different category. So that's why we have to have certain categories and departments and segregate it rather than it all be into one account.
And you're, you're streamlining that process. Is that, previously, we were operating under that understanding, even though the backend of the accounts didn't look like that. And so now my concern in reading this new policy didn't protect that, but you're saying because you're moving into the funds and fixing the backend, it will actually protect that. Meaning we'll, we'll do a street fund and under that there'll be categories. And if you overspend in one, you could pull from another one. But in theory, that total amount is, is.
I have spent two hundred, I have a budget for, for roads for two hundred thousand. It, it includes weatherway clearing, potholes, uh, whatever it may be, okay? I could spend it all on potholes if I needed to. But after two hundred thousand, if I try to spend more, I couldn't spend anymore. I would have to come before council and say, hey, we need money and we're either going to have to move it from a different fund if we still have assets or we're going to take it for fund balance. Normally what you do at the end of the year is that you come in with a reconciliation and you say, hey, we're not going to take it for fund balance, but we have extra money in, um, parks because we didn't have the playground equipment that we had to buy some more fabricated wood fibers. And so we can move that money that we already had budgeted over to the road maintenance. So you don't touch that fund balance. So that fund balance stays at that one point six million that we have now.
Got it. Thank you.
And that's part of the process of moving to this new software in order to account for that and segregate it all. Does that make sense?
Thank you, yeah.
Sure.
All right, so. Code roll, please.
Councilmember Chris Germer.
All right.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambert?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Breckley?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Good unanimous. Very much, bottom number nine, um, is, uh, act, uh, just going to take appropriate action on the resolution. I mean, on the city's procurement policy.
Oh, once again, this was, uh, this is the total document, didn't really go through the other one. Uh, of the other, the, the two major, what I figure are the two major different of these is first of all, uh, it increases the amount requiring three bids from three hundred dollars to five thousand. So, um, anything under five thousand, we don't have to get three bids. And then also, it includes, um, language for hubs, which are historically, um, underutilized businesses, which is required by the state of Texas to have in your permit policy. The one reason for the three thousand to five thousand?
Three hundred.
Three hundred to five thousand is, uh, especially on the, on parks buying these equipment. Uh, basically, everything that we get, we'd have to solicit three bids, which you can do, but it's time consuming for a three hundred dollar item. Uh, most cities, uh, have a five thousand dollar to ten thousand dollar requirement for the three bids. That's normal. And so all I'm asking is to raise it to the five thousand so we can get some stuff purchased, we don't have to gather.
Mayor, I made it, we, uh, uh, approve resolution two oh two three dash zero seven dash one two dash zero two of the City of Wood Creek, uh, Texas, uh, amending the city's procurement policy dated, uh, May twenty-five, come of two thousand twenty-two.
I second that.
Let me speak about that just briefly. Uh, one of the things that I think that was shared with me is that we're trying to replace the host bed out here. We need a garden and it's more than three hundred bucks, so we gotta get three bids. Every time a guy comes out, they charge seventy bucks, you know, okay? So, yeah, it, it seems like, number one, that's silly. Number two, that what you're asking for is in line with what most other cities do, is that, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I had a question.
Mm-hmm.
Is this the same document that was previously in our packet?
No, it was not.
Okay, because I looked at it as a good group, this is totally different again, and I thought I.
Well, yes, I looked for expediency, I was trying to, all it changed was the amount from three thou- three hundred to five thousand. But since we didn't, it got, kept on getting pushed, I put in the, the, because we're going to have to come back again and add in the hub. And so I just redid it, so we didn't have, we don't have to come back and do it here in a couple of months.
Right. Um, I like the five thousand amount, I support that. Ten is getting risky business, I learned that with Farview. If I had not had to solicit bids for the parking space, I could have spent three thousand more dollars with the, taking the first guy. So I saved the city three grand in soliciting bids, uh, and that was under five grand. So just, you know, the idea is, uh, best practice, right? And I don't always solicit bids for projects around my house. But, um, you know, if it's getting, if you think it could be high, um, soliciting bids is good, try to solicit.
Well, that's what, I mean, I, I, I look at it the same way in terms of, you know, like if we're doing, you know, stuff around the house. And it's like, sometimes you just know, but it's sometimes you said, hey, I need to get the best deal I can get here. And if under five thousand, you can still solicit bids. You know, you can still go out for three, you can go out for seven, ten bids, you know, if you, if you really want to sort of test the waters. But, you know, to have something set that is, is like, you know, realistic and.
Yeah, not that we wouldn't, I mean, just because it's under five thousand doesn't mean that we won't go out for bids if, if deemed necessary. But sometimes it's just spend a dollar to save a quarter.
But sort of, I mean, my, my point is really sort of dealing with what, um, Mayor Portem Breckley said is that, like, my, my goal, you know, would be to have, like, designated contract or, or, you know, like annual contract.
We'll eventually have that service.
With a plumber, with, you know, the, so that, you know, say, like, and you can put that, then you say, okay, well, for an annual basis, that's over five thousand bucks probably, so, you know, we're going to get bids on who's, who are, who are contractors going to be on an annual basis. But that's, that would be my goal, is to be able to pick up the phone and say, let's get it done, we gotta get it done now. Um, and just be able to, to sort of speed things up.
So that would be kind of like on the tenure.
Yeah, we would have a contractor, it would be like the Arborists, the City Arborists, we go out, we get a plumber. That was my question when I had my hand up, because I would go that direction.
It, it, it's, it's common practice in many cities where you just get a, um, service agreement that, you know, any rope with a potholes, because a lot of cities, they hire out fixing their potholes or doing something. And so any other time there's a pothole, they have one company that they bid out competitively. And so whenever they have a pothole, they call the guy and say, hey, go fill it. They fill it for fifty bucks or whatever the, their grade was on. But it's a service agreement that lasts for a certain number of time, but you have to competitively bid it. But you don't have to go out to bids every time if you do the service.
Once per year instead of once per project.
Right.
Right.
All right, any other discussion?
Um, I have a question. On, on our existing policy on number two, the procedure section, um, and where it's talking about the processes and, you know, council involvement, where, when I read the, the new post draft, you don't really speak to council's involvement in the processes of purchasing?
Um, council is not in the process of purchasing, um, council sets the budget and we work under the budget with our constraints on purchasing. Now, there are, uh, in here, there are, um, it does say that if anything's over fifteen hundred dollars, that it comes before council on a monthly basis, just like in the other one. And you have that with your, um, check writing, um, policy in there. And then plus two, anything over fifty thousand dollars has to go before council as well.
Yeah, in the, in our previous procedures, um, which I've actually checked all of it, it's, it's been pretty consistent all the way back to twenty fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, 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 it discusses, uh, for unbudgeted purchases, it must go before council.
Right, if, if, if we don't have money for it, we will. But if we have money in our budget, we can go ahead and purchase it.
Money in the budget earmarked for whatever that.
You don't have, you don't have the council to buy printer paper.
Correct.
You need to buy, you need to buy a new roof and it's not on the budget.
Right, just like we did with the, um, Xerox copier for three thousand dollars a couple of months ago. That is, that's still going to come before y'all, all, especially the big.
Oh, the scanner?
Yeah, the scanner. You know, I'm, I'm not going to spend four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars to buy, I mean, if, if, if it's a big ticket item, it's going to come before y'all's approval. Because I don't want that to.
What if it's six months? What if it's Friday?
Yeah, I'm going on it right now. But yeah, the bigger, the bigger odds tickets that we haven't really talked about would still come before you.
Yeah, that, that's what I was just, that was, it's been kind of historically part of this document for Wood Creek. And then to not see it in this new document describing, you know, what this, if, if it's this fund and it's this amount, that, you know, council needs to get involved and stuff. And I'm just like, that language isn't there.
Yeah.
So I was just curious, um. And I was also really curious on the, um, the, under the number one, governing authority. There's one line that I'm like, I could read this in two different ways, but I think it's about languaging, like how it's working. And on.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-six.
Twenty-one.
All powers of the city vest in the city council, period. Authority for purchasing of goods and services delegated to the city manager, provided that purchasing does not exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Correct. That i- i- is a state law, I, I, no, actually, is that reasonable?
Well, yeah, with, with, uh, uh, inflation, I think those numbers have changed.
I, I think I'll have to check it, I, I kept fifty thousand in there. Um, it was in the, the legislation this year that it, it went up to a hundred thousand that it's required for council to approve any purchase above fifty thousand.
Well, I mean, looked at the chapter two five two, and I was just, I was just curious where the fifty came from. Because when I read the two five two chapter, the fifty was about the,
Unbudgeted.
Un, 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 no, unrecognized, not unrecognized, realized. The lower, like, businesses that are local that have not been.
Oh.
What's that called?
Oh, the hubs.
Hubs.
Hubs, no, okay.
That, that was.
If there is a hub, if there's a hub, that's totally different. And that's three thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars, you have to get three bids.
Yes, and then so.
That's separate from, yeah, and what you have to do is you have to see if there's a, let's say I'm going to buy a widget. I have to see if there's a, a, um, historically underutilized.
License.
Uh-huh, if that produces that widget, if there does, then I have to get three quotes if it's between three thousand and fifty thousand. Apparently, it's three thousand or more.
So, yeah, in my brain, I was like, okay, this is fifty thousand and that was fifty thousand, it's like, is that where that number came from?
Two different rules.
That was kind of the weirdest question I had asked, like, is that what we're referencing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, approved. Going to bring the, um, city's procurement policy, resolution two zero two three dash zero seven dash two one two dash oh two.
Councilmember Bob Hambert?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Breckley?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Germer?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you. Um, as mentioned earlier, we're, um, you told item number ten. Uh, item number eleven is to review and discuss the City of Wood Creek chapters of plan, take possible action in accordance with the, uh, plan, comprehensive plan goals, but again, action plans of this council alliance.
Uh, recommend that council discuss the comprehensive plan this evening and consider setting out a plan for next steps necessary to achieve or address items identified.
My second.
Mary. Um, I just wanted to, real quick, take the, the pleasure of addressing the concerns expressed at the beginning of the meeting. Um, this, the purpose of tonight's discussion is not a review for change or edit or update. It's because we have the budget season coming up. And so I just wanted to get this document before all of our eyes again, so we can keep it in mind when we're discussing the budget and, um, making decisions, because that is actually council's responsibility, is to keep this document and the goals of the citizens in mind when making decisions. And so, uh, it, like I said, it wasn't a review for change. And of course, the P and Z will still proceed with that authority, I hope they do. And, uh, maybe it might be worth reminding them that that, you know, when those timelines are, get that on a schedule for them. Um, but essentially, my, my agenda with this was that we sort of like make sure that we're ticking off the citizens' goals and that in planning, like I said, for this next year, we budget and allocate funds for that process so that we're not having to work backwards. Uh, you know, a prime example is, uh, and we'll talk about this when we go through the review, is pedestrian mobility, right? We're talking about a survey that's got a cost, we're talking about, um, you know, eventually, there would need to also be land survey, a different kind of survey. So we need to be budgeting for those items so that they're not unexpected costs. And if you don't end up using them, that's one thing, but if you never plan for it, then it gets even harder to get an action about it. Um, so that, that was my, my plan for this evening. I cited pages, uh, forty-four through seventy-three in particular, because that's when we, when we get into those actionable items. Um, this, this last year and a half, we've ticked off a lot of this stuff. We've, we've done a good job, um, you know, we're in motion on the roads, which was the primary concern. Um, it, in, so forty-four, page forty-four is in the, uh, sorry.
Back it up.
Then, yeah, sorry, let me get the actual.
One forty-one is the package.
I think I left a one off, ooh, or no, what did I do then? Anyway, the actionable items are at the end of the packet. If you want to scroll all the way down, I'll find you your page number real fast. I had it marked earlier and I just got off of it, I apologize. Um, so we are in, yes, so you get the goals. Um, one of the, they're, they're identified by the systems, addressing mobility, the natural systems, future development goals, these are, they're all there, right? And we outlined how the survey was done. And so on page one forty-one, as Mayor Asko said, we have most pressing issues, roadway improvements, we're moving forward on that. Pedestrian safety, mobility is second, and then tree preservation. So we've already put in ordinances to address tree preservation, we now have a tree board, we have Tree City USA. Um, so we, we've made strong progress on that. The pedestrian safety and mobility is something lacking action and that moving forward into the, the budget season, I am hoping that we are going to be willing to allocate funds to that. Um, if you go down through it all, we have the master transportation plan we have not gotten in action about, that's for the platinum panel. Uh, and that would include that maintenance plan. I know they've talked about understanding that, that it's needed. And so that maintenance plan would be a, a budget item that we need to start allocating money for and, uh, and planning for each year. Um, we also talked about the concept of reducing the M and O. So finding ways to cut our expenditures to reduce the pressure off of, uh, adware and tax income. Um, now, our adware and income keeps going up. So it, you know, without much change, that's kind of happening naturally, but that's something that the citizens express interest in. And that's not takeoff items that the citizens want. That's find other areas where we're spending unnecessarily or maybe in excess, uh, um, of what needs to be done. One of the other main things I noted in my review was that they want more parks. And I put in a request out to get, to start allocating funds, potentially even ones that roll over for the purchasing of parkland. So that we're, you know, if, if a lot comes up for sale again, you know? We, we have started saving for that and planning for that and, um, we're able to move on those items faster. Um, so that if there was anything else, uh, in my initial review, um, I think that was it, that's all I found that we were lacking action on or potentially needed to, uh, make sure was included in our budgeting process coming up.
Like, thank you for your concern about all of these things, and they are all very important. Um, but I also still believe that we're usurping, um, P and Z's particular position and their being able to do this first. We can look at some of the things as far as the comprehensive plan when it comes to the budget without actually having, doing anything that's actionable. And I believe that, uh, that we can do that during the budget process and not during our city council meetings.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to indefinitely postpone this, uh, and I'm entitled to vote on that. I'd like it to come back as a specific item, like, you know, here are the things, you know, we want, uh, I want, you know, allocation for mobility or pedestrian safety or for whatever. Um, uh, this is the, the lack of specificity concerns me, and I don't know how we could possibly take action on it based on how it's worded. So that's my motion to definitely postpone.
My second.
Indefinite postponement has a ninety day limit. What? Indefinite postponements have a ninety day limit. Okay.
Can I clarify? I'm, I'm not asking that we have to make an action plan here. I put that in there, in the thoughts of if something comes up in discussions and we were like, oh, we need to direct platinum panel to fill in the blank that we would have that option. Because we are, as council, charged with keeping this document at the forefront of our discussions and decision-making and to be accounting for the citizens' wishes whenever we do things here. And that was the goal of this item, not to override P and Z also doing their business or, uh, you know, make it vague. It was left open with the intention of, of good discussion might generate action items.
Amen.
Good.
Um, thank you, Deborah Hines, for bringing this comprehensive plan back in front of us. Um, this is, gives us an opportunity to kind of refresh and refocus on what the comprehensive plan has been completed thus far. Kind of like, I use it as often a checklist. This is gives us an opportunity to kind of refresh and refocus on what the comprehensive plan has been completed thus far, it's kind of like, I use it as often a checklist of things. Um when I propose to put an item on the agenda, I'm kind of looking at the comprehensive plan go. We haven't addressed this and citizens really want this, so let's put this on the agenda and get the discussion going, so it's nice to have this document put back in front of us. Um I've personally been doing research on finding an outside funding that can be used towards citizens' mobility. Uh specifically recently, a new possibility has opened up and it'll be opening up in October, um which is one of the E D A grants. That might look really good for um this project of citizen mobility, it's. Previously, when I looked, there was only there was a very small amount of grants possible that were within the description, so it's nice that I'm suddenly seeing this burst of new possibilities. And I think when we talk about the budget and. Um citizen mobility, I want to make sure that we have a matching grant section. For because often um the E D A grant is an eighty and twenty percent match, eighty percent, twenty percent. Um also a lot of interesting love being able to review this comp plan again. Um it brought it reminded me of something that a previous city manager had said, which was about noise pollution. And he goes, you know, for all this true this. This the people who back up to busy streets, we could actually raise the back fence to be ten.
Yes.
And hmm.
I took credit for that.
Oh, do you? Well, the previous city manager is the one who told me about it, so I do apologize, and so what was nice is having this comp plan back here and kind of looking through it again. Brought back that idea and go, okay, I can bring that back, or I can bring it forward, I know. Brought that one, um. So I just wanted to say thank you, um it was nice to sit and. For through this document again and say, hey, we've checked off a lot of these things, we've done really well. And then it just kind of like makes you focus on, well, there's these perks we haven't done yet. And maybe we can start focusing on that.
Yeah, I'd like to speak like the um. You know, coming from a coming from a corporate environment. Um we always worked really hard on this strategic plan for the for the agency or for the company. Um and that became our bubble, basically, we didn't do anything that wasn't outlined in the strategic plan. You know, it sounded like, hey, you got a budget, you got a strategic plan, you match them together, and there you go, well, for the city, the comprehensive plan served for that purpose, and so. And so I I do disagree that this is solely the purview of P and Z. Because P and Z does not do the budget, you know, they can come to us and they, you know. This thing is a strategic plan, I mean, the comprehensive plan needs work, I mean, we like to read a budget accordingly. That's great, but I don't think there's any reason, in fact, we should be bringing up the comprehensive plan on a regular basis, like, you know, where are we, are we still on track? You know, P and Z does not run with the city council, you know, they're an advisory body to us. Now, to come to to Mayor for Tim's police amendment. Um I agree that, you know, specificity would be nice, they're saying, okay, so we have this, you know, mobility issue. Um we've talked to the Platinum Roads panel about it, you know, we agree that about, you know. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars is gonna be needed over a period of a few years, we need to budget accordingly, bring that to the council. Um but but I I um. You know, it it's like, I'm I I mean, I agree with both. Parties, I think that we need to be able to come to the council with. With specific ideas or how we accomplish some of the goals in the comprehensive plan. Um and then with backup from our from the bodies that we've put together to advise us and that we trust to advise us correctly. Um that we can get more specific about, you know, what it's gonna take to accomplish those goals. But for us to just say, hey, we're just not gonna look at the comprehensive plan because we don't have P and Z permission, um is is not really. Going to be very helpful to us in the future.
I have a question, so the list of items I've highlighted, I didn't make a motion to do anything with them. Um are we now saying that that I need motions for each of those items because in my mind. This is this was for discussion and review purposes with the understanding that um. Some of this stuff has been works, like, do we, do I need to say? Send in items to Platinum Panel again about the master transportation plan and and maintenance schedule, do I need, do we need that because we've we've been kind of. Stepping back from motions for everything. With the understanding that some of this would be administrative and that just in discussion staff would be hearing this because we, you know, so that I'm, this is a question, what is needed here because I did. List actionable items.
This is like, if you think of the Olympic rings, how they overlap a little bit on each side, you've got the comprehensive plan, then you've got budgeting, there is overlap. That touches both, but the the comprehensive plan is more of a long term, ten year planning document. Budgeting, you can bring back every month and say, this is a budget priority. And so I don't think that that you need to wrap it in the umbrella of the comprehensive plan, you can present it as a budgeting issue. And say, in the comprehensive plan, this is what's important to us, yada, yada, yada.
That's what I'm doing tonight, that's why I brought up the comprehensive plan and put it in the agenda and said with forethinking, we're gonna be looking at the budget, please consider these items. Remember Platinum Panel, we have standing motions for them on some of these items, just like a refresher of where we're at. And so I'm asking because then it was, we lack specificity, specificity, am I needing to make specific motions right now?
Well, I know what you're saying, yeah.
Cause I'm ma'am, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
The the this is more of a a budget discussion that we will have in. Um August. That you can bring up when we come with actual numbers, you can actually see, okay, we have about a hundred thousand that we can allocate to somewhere. And then this is where council would come back and say, okay, let's put fifty in the street maintenance or whatever, but but what you're. Talking about is more of a it needs to be happening in a budget conversation is where probably needs to.
Some of it, yes, and I said I submitted my budget.
I think.
Your venture.
Okay, um. We Platinum Committee has been kind of busy with the growth, but the one most meeting where we put this item in front of it. They haven't had a meeting since, but here I noticed this good brought this up. Part of that plan under create walking trails said obtain engineering studies to work on placement of trails. Within the community, so that is type of budget item that you're talking about, that we need to. Tell the Platinum Roads, you guys are authorized to get an engineering study, to get a professional overview. And also my concern with this is also get good cost estimates. We will probably help alternatives, let's see, you know, what the price ranges will be, but also on. Um I guess this was a good refresher on the comprehensive plan. It said from time to time, it needs to be reviewed and updated. And I think it needs to be reviewed and updated. Um because things have changed and I don't know how that that happens. But. One of the things it seems to emphasize is that Wood Creek is now this affordable haven. And that people who can't afford other places can live here. But the average home price in. Wood Creek is around four hundred fifty thousand and we're not as affordable, I think some of the texture. Of the comprehensive plan maybe should be adjusted, it also says. Twenty eight percent of Wimberly are over sixty five. The thirteen percent in Texas, Wood Creek has sixty percent are over sixty five. And in the comprehensive plan, it calls out a slight much longer, it is not, we are. We're basically a retirement community that doesn't strip all comers. But I think there never has been. As much emphasis as possible on the existing taxpayers. Who who happen to be um one of those senior citizens. And if young is better, you won't find any senior who doesn't agree with that, but. This is our community and I would like to see our comprehensive plan a little more focused on. The larger population, which is about, I estimated eleven hundred people in Wood Creek. And the schedules in here show like two hundred uh.
Hundred.
Two hundred people that are under eighteen, so. Um so I would. Like to know what the process is for review, there's actually quite a few type of graphics too.
Well, that's not for the, you know, that's P and Z, that I mean, that's their review.
Yes, yes, okay.
P and P and Z needs to take a review and do that, and that would be, that would be up to them, we have a, we have a a. Uh amendment on the floor, um.
Alright, yeah, let me just speak to that very briefly, uh I like the idea of reviewing and discussing, I think it's essential, um. But in terms of taking possible action, in terms of updating it, if it can be updated for budget items. That's for another day because I don't think we have the specificity here to do that, so I stand by the motion, definitely postpone, but I I do encourage. And I I respect and and agree with you. Uh reviewing the comprehensive plan every chance we get.
Well, let's let's vote on the on the amendment uh. Postponing discussion on item number eleven, indefinitely or ninety days.
Mayor for Tim Brentley.
Do you, I have a parliamentary question, could you read the main motion and the amendment?
Let me go backwards.
Okay.
The. The amendment was that Mayor for Tim Brentley was making a motion to postpone this. And I was going to add a brackets item and return as a specific agenda item.
No, I I made a motion to definitely postpone, but I I can't apparently admit it to see if we want to bring it back, but. I just anyway, I I'll stand by the indefinite postponement for now.
I mean, I think we could withdraw it, to be honest, I mean, nothing actual came up, there was. You know, we've got stuff in works, we understand budgets coming up, I, again, it was an open action, if something came up and we wanted to do it, we could, but.
Yeah.
Future agenda items, if you're gonna talk about the budget, the word budget should probably appear in the agenda item, I just think it 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 addresses it addresses the the issue of. Compliance, I I don't want to undercut. My esteemed co-council here, when we talk about specificity, but specificity does not apply to this issue. Specificity is not applied to a neighbor who lives next door to a variance, this is a budget issue in a comprehensive plan that affects the entire city. Every agenda item can always be written in the word, but the word specificity has a legal implication when you're talking about the Open Vitals Act, it does. It's a it's a transfer, so I think, check that out, um so so it just it for the for 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 an agenda item. It's gonna go on in the future at any time to talk about budgeting issues, the word budget should appear, um or else it just creates an opportunity for somebody to complain about it. From the Open Vitals Act, um uh if you if you only want to discuss it. And and don't anticipate taking action. Uh not including me take possible action gives you a whole lot more leeway in what you can do on the agenda item. That's it.
Well.
I understand, and I didn't mean the two to be conflicted.
Let me say, if you're done, then I don't, we don't need to definitely postpone, because I don't want to put a ninety day thing on it or whatever, if you're done and we're done, I I don't need it, you know, so I can control it, like I say, withdrawing my.
I do have I do have a question of the city manager, so so. Do you foresee budget workshop in August?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we will, we will, um October, or the second, yeah.
Those um.
Uh time late, the um second Wednesday in August, on the ninth, August ninth. We will actually be voting on the proposal budget.
Okay.
All that is, is it sets the tax rate, it's a formality, it doesn't put anything, but but you do have to. Uh the clock starts keeping where you have to do actual, where we have to do actual items, like posting notices and doing, giving a proposal budget to the. City secretary, y'all have to vote on the proposed tax rate, so we can put the proposed tax rate in the newspaper to for requirements. And so, but yes, the August. Nine will be a heavy budget night. For those that putting in agenda items, this is gonna be. Hackful of budget, and we can have a special this workshop on budget if we need it.
Man, we've done that in the past where we just had, you know, a a a solitary agenda item, which is a budget workshop, correct?
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
So his question was, will we have that before August ninth?
I would like to, we could if you want it.
I'm gonna step in as kind of parliamentary, and we do have an amendment, one second, and you did read. I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's withdrawing.
But the body owns it, he can't draw it, draw it because.
Okay, then we'll vote down.
I'm just saying.
Alright, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's our, I mean, I I do love having you. Alright, so if that's the case, we'll vote um the amendment.
Mayor for Tim Brentley.
No.
Councilmember Lani Bailey.
No.
Councilmember Chris Germer.
No.
Councilmember Bob Hender.
No.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
No.
Oh, what if it's on motion?
Brutal. What's the turn?
Uh well, we have the main motion, they were getting turned, that was the main motion. One more vote for it. It was just a motion, okay.
What?
That was the motion, that was the motion.
The other motion was just for discussion and should a motion for action occur, we could potentially pick it.
It's already during the motion.
Second.
Yeah.
You're done.
Never been.
Under three hours.
Not bad.
I know, we've got ten minutes.
Look, I can't leave, I have to. You have.